So, they say we can, so we will start. Good evening, this is, excuse me, the Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, October 30th, 2017. It's 7:07, we're having a few glitches here trying to get things put back together after the storm, but it looks like it's gonna work, so we'll call the meeting to order at 7:06 and begin with a roll call, please, Ms. Van Twyver.
Mrs. Oden.
Here.
Dr. Murataki.
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver's here. Mr. Halliwell. Mr. Moser. Mrs. Ziem. Ms. Ohensie. Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Farrington.
Here.
We have Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney, Ms. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. McIntyre. I forgot them this time.
Dr. McIntyre? No. Mr. Halliwell is down at City Hall, the Altermanic Budget Committee's meeting, and they're discussing the paracontract tonight. Is Mr. Donovan down there, too?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Donovan down there, and depending on what their agenda looks like, they may or may not be back with us here in a little bit. And so continuing right along, Ms. Van Twyver, if you'll do the prayer, and, Ms. Kaufman, if you'll do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all our decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow students, citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving right along, we come to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda by Mrs. Ziem, seconded by Mrs. Oden. Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Nothing removed from the consent agenda? Any communications outside of the consent agenda? Seeing none, I see Mrs. Newman just came in. Public questions, comment, period, limited to items on the agenda? Anybody in the, in the audience have anything they'd like to talk about this evening? Okay. Superintendent's comments, Dr. Mosley.
Thank you. Well, I would be remiss to say that it's been a very interesting start of the, of the day. I just wanted to thank all of the emergency response teams that are currently working in the city. I say currently working because there are still trees down, and I know that they're working diligently to do the best they can to clear the roads. By far, we never planned to have no electricity in the middle of October, and the weather was probably about, I would say now it's cooled down, but it's about 75 degrees out, it's pretty balmy out there. So, with that said, I promise I'll give myself a good shave tonight and cut all my hairs. I pluralize hairs because you never cut one hair off, you always cut your hairs off. Because certainly where I was, there was no power, and I think probably with the reports we got, I want to thank Chris Lassard for all of his work and communication, he's been nothing but great. Probably about a third of our city lost power, that's approximation, and we had about three schools that were down. So, as of the latest update that I've heard, and again, EverSource is working on this, is that we had Sunset Heights was our only school that did not, or currently does not have power, and I know that EverSource is working on that. And Birch Hill had about 50 percent power, and that was being addressed. So, I want to commend and thank, you know, everyone that was involved, Donna Garth, Dave Rousseau, trying to think of people that I was contacting today. Superintendents and local districts for just coordinating communication, so I thank all of you. Things going on in the district? Well, I want to thank Mr. Kaufman for finally helping me with my identity. First, I was struggling with conversations with, with Mosley, what was it, I think it was coffees and conversations, but I finally found my niche. It's Mosley's Muffins with Mosley. He actually wrote that down and slid it towards me, so I'm acknowledging Mr. Kaufman for that, but I'm also taking the trademark away from him, so now I'm calling it Eminem with Mosley or something like that. So, we have that actually here at the North on October 19th, and it was, I would say, well-attended. I had about an hour and a half of conversation with community members, parents, and it was nothing but a nice opportunity to get, get some feedback on some things that are going on in the district, what parents want to see in the district, and I had some students that came along to give me some feedback, so that was very, very nice. My next Mosley's with Muffins will be on November 14th, and I'm looking forward to, again, getting out to the schools. I'm gonna start off, I did a high school, and I did, I did the North, and I did Ledge. So, my next venture is into the middle schools, and I'll be holding them, so thank you for all those attended, and if you didn't get a chance to attend, please check our website and you'll see where I will be. So, I appreciate it. Some great news, robotics education program, that is a grant that is available to our, our faculty through the State Department, and I'm pleased to announce that at the high school, we had recipients receive up to $1,178 for robotics projects that were going to be sponsored through the Department of Education, so I'm really pleased to announce that for our, our faculty, and I thank the faculty for their work on that. There's a recognition ceremony coming up for BAE Systems for our CTE program here at the North. They were very, very gracious enough to donate two nice, large tanks for our, for our marine robotics program here, so that's coming up on November 2nd. There's more details coming out for that ceremony. I wanted to personally and thank BAE for all their support, and we certainly are looking forward to acknowledging them and, and working in partnership with them in the future for all the things they do for our, for our school. There is a teacher, high school, National High School North teacher, Mark Stewart, who participated in a professional development on genogenet, genome generation, and basically genomics, if I'm saying that correctly, is a relatively new area of research that examines the subtle variations in each person's unique genetic code and the individualized prevention, diagnostic, and treatment of diseases. So, I'd like to just personally thank Mark Stewart for all his work in bringing innovation to our, our schools. One of the things that I had an opportunity to do, and some board members were with me on Saturday, and it was just, it's, it epitomizes community, it is, one of the things that reminds us of what we're doing here is that I attended and, I would say participated in, but more I'd say attended, and we have a nice community center that opened up right outside of Dr. Crisp, and they had ribbon ceremony, cutting ceremony on Saturday, and it was a nice event, well-attended. We had some, I'm being facetious here, but we had some little cute students with some witches, and I think we had a couple goblins and zombies, kids dressed up in Halloween costumes attending the event. It was very nice. I can't begin to think, I can't begin to acknowledge all of the individuals that were there. I know that the mayor was there, I thank the mayor, I thank the Boys and Girls Club, the Y, so I can go on and on, but I just really wanted to acknowledge and thank all those individuals that were there. So, it's nice to be there, it's nice that we were all able to attend, and for those of you who weren't able to attend, that's okay, just go down to that community center and you'll see all the great things that are available for the kids there. So, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Excuse me. Board member response to superintendent's comments. We'll just start here with Mrs. Oden, go right around. Mrs. Oden?
Thank you. I did attend my brother's keeper community building over next to Dr. Crisp. I had, I went there the first day that they had a cleaning, and I went back in the afternoon on Saturday, and it was just amazing, all the work that those people did. It just unbelievable, and the, the people there, the kids were enjoying it, it was very cordial, it was just very friendly, and they have done just an extremely impressive job restoring that building for good use in the community, so thank you to all those people, and they were numerous. My brother's keeper committee had done a tremendous amount of work, matter of fact, Mrs. Ziem is on that committee, but somebody familiar to us, Kim Kleiner, was recognized for all the work she has done there, so it was, it was just really, really nice. The other things I'll save for the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Ziem, anything?
Well, I'm just, I don't have, I don't, I did want to mention that one of the wonderful things in my view about the new community center is that it's in correlation with all of the nonprofits in the city, and so if, if parents or people in our community had a need and they didn't know where to go for that need, it's my understanding that that information is going to be available as part of the community center. So, there will be a lot of services that come, certainly the kids will be the main benefactors, but there will be other services for the community that I think will be, will be, will be well-received. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I, too, was there, and I got a big kick out of it. It, believe it or not, it was a really old building that was once the stable for the fire department, and then next door they built a firehouse. So, this building had been recycled several times, they, they knew how to build them back then. I just wanted to, it was kind of like a building that kept on giving. I managed to walk through the whole place, there's a downstairs, first level, second level, but there's actually, the top floor of that building is like a dance studio. It's just one gigantic space, and I was very impressed, it was very well-lit, and I think they did a super job. But, in addition, the, my original comment had to, Dr. Mosley mentioned that the kids were all dressed up and they were receiving candy and pencils or whatever. I just wanted to mention that the principal and the assistant principal from Dr. Crisp were there as two lions. Well said. And I'm, I'm told there are photographs, just like a couple of weeks ago when we, when we were there and Ms. Fitzpatrick was on the, on the, one of the gym, you know, the outdoor playground, I, too, took a picture of myself with the two lions, so I'm looking forward to that. So, thanks to Ms. Fulton, and I know the assistant principal is Tracy, but I don't remember her last name, so if anybody knows, I just want to put a shout out to them, they...
Cassidy.
Yeah, Tracy Cassidy. Yeah, great sports all around, and I think they, they were lucky, they were in a, it was a little cool that day, so I think they probably liked being in the costume, they kept warm. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver?
I have no, oops.
I have no other comment, except for the fact it sounds like you've been busy, Mr. Dr. Mosley. Particularly, I'm sorry I missed the community house opening, but I haven't been able to make most of those, any of those meetings before due to health, so I'm glad to see that it's open and it's working.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes, thank you very much. I, I empathize with Dr. Mosley. My home had been actually without heat in mid-winter for a couple weeks one time because of a, as a storm like this, and I was praying that this wasn't gonna happen this time. I spent some time driving around my district just to see what the damage was looking like, and it was actually pretty serious. We had quite a few homes in my ward that were without power. There were big trees, still, even with all of that legislation that we've had about proactive tree cutting, we still had a lot of big trees that had fallen across power lines, so we still have work to do in that area. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
So, right now in Senate at National South, we're talking about inviting the board and the superintendent, probably the assistant superintendents, to come to a meeting one time, like similar to what we did with, a couple years ago with the grading system. We haven't really discussed topics or anything, but I'm just letting you know that these plans are in works right now, so.
Well, good. Give us a little warning on the topics we should study up on, please. Nothing on budget, Committee on Finance and Operations, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. First, let me say that at our last meeting, we had three guest companies where we talked about energy conservation, we just heard their presentations, we were there pretty late, so the next meeting, we will be discussing those presentations and give due consideration to their proposals. So, beyond that, there were two motions, recommendations that came out of the committee. The first one is, and I move to recommend, the approval of the HVAC Equipment Maintenance Annual Contract for Bicentennial Amherst Street, Dr. Crisp, Crisp and Central Office at a cost of $14,713.
Seconded by Mrs. Ziem, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the HVAC Equipment Maintenance Contract for Bicentennial Amherst, Dr. Crisp, Central Office? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. There was also, and I move to recommend the approval and place on file the FY 18 September Transfer Report.
Seconded by Mrs. Ziem, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the September 28, fiscal 2018 Transfer Report, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes.
And just one last thing, we're just to refer to our next meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, November 8th, at 6:30 PM at the District Office. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to expand on something that you said. This, we've had a number of meetings where we've looked at all sorts of different alternatives to providing energy here in the district, whether we buy our own solar panels or rent and all that, and this has been a series of meetings that we've had and interviews to try to come to some agreement as to what is the best way to approach this, to try and realize some savings in our utilities. Committee on Policy, Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you, Mr. Farrington. First item of business is to approve JH student attendance. There were no changes to this policy, and it should be marked as reviewed and accepted for the second, you know, for the review as no changes.
Seconded by Mrs. Ziem, is there any discussion? Mrs. Oden?
I just want to say, I often hear, especially the high school teachers, talking about they're responsible for the students' education, but if they're not there, it's hard to educate them. And I had a teacher write me an email and said, might it be a good idea to have a conversation about having student attendance be part of the competencies as an expectation? And I thought that left some leeway for teachers, so I was just wondering if administration wanted to talk to teachers and, and see if that might be something, if they had something in, for expectations, that students are there on time, ready to, I don't know exactly what they would want, but I thought that was a reasonable request to look at that. Thank you.
Is that...
Isn't that part of the, the report card?
There's a separate segment on the report card, I bet Cam knows it.
So, what we have right now is they're called the school-wide competencies. They're basically like, they're like called soft skills almost, like whether you're coming to class, whether you're doing your work, whether you're speaking appropriately, correctly, that type of thing. But, there is a lot of talk right now that those, those competencies don't really have a lot of merit to them right now, because you could be passing a class and you could fail those and they won't do anything, or, you know, they don't, I guess students don't really see a big, a big deal with them. So, one of the things that we're talking about doing in Student Voice is reexamining those this year and possibly coming up with a revised version of them, or like a kind of a revamped version, maybe something that'll get them to where they were before, like, you know, if attendance was like 10 percent of your grade or something like that. Because I know that used to be like that in some ways, but, yeah, this is definitely something I can bring back to them and say, we need to put more focus on student attendance, because I know that, so if you miss 30 days of school and you still pa, you can still pass a class, and like, I don't, I don't know how right that is right now, so.
Mr. McIntyre, is there nothing on the, your report card for attendance?
There, I know it lists how many days you are absent on the report card. I think it would fall into responsibility, maybe, as for the school-wide competency, but we could definitely make attendance more a clearer part of the report card.
If I recall, when we changed both at the high school and at the elementary school, when we went to the standards-based report cards, we pulled out some of those things in, at the elementary school, were they the characteristics of a successful learner? Is that what they were called?
That's what I was thinking of.
And so, the intent, as I recall, was to make those a separate area so that they wouldn't impact the knowledge base that we're looking for in the courses. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, I remember it.
You, you said over there a nod about it, Garth, so I'm gonna call on you.
Yeah, at the elementary level, they report out on the characteristics of a successful learner during progress reports, and then below that, they do make an academic comment, some of the things that Mr. McIntyre referred to of being respectful, being prepared for class, executing on your homework, things like that.
So, and, and we, we tried to do it at the middle school, and it never got past the board. I think there was a, there was an attempt at the middle school, I want to say last year? Where they want, they wanted to do just that one element of the report card, and the board voted that down, if I remember correctly.
I think it was the curriculum committee.
Oh, maybe, it never even got to the board?
I don't think so.
I don't remember, but there has been some conversation about it, and I think that, that if I remember, if I'm remembering correctly, and it sounds like I might be, have part of it, is there was a deliberate move to move some of those things out of the grade for the individual courses.
Thank you. I don't want to get off topic, because we're talking about a policy and its approval, but as it relates to competencies, isn't one of the, the weird things about competencies is if you can demonstrate competency, you can essentially, you demonstrate your proficiency you essentially test out effectively, right? So, to put a requirement for attendance is that contradiction, it's just, I just, I just want to throw it out there, because it seems like it's certainly a topic worth discussion at a future date.
Well, I was thinking the same thing. We have a board member over to my right who frequently talks about seat time versus the other, and I wondered if he was going to jump in here or not.
Well, I've been listening over the last two years, I've learned something, yeah.
And it does raise that question if it's attendance is, what role attendance plays. I understand the frustration of a teacher for if children come in and then don't, don't attend, but come in and pass the test.
I was gonna say, I think that's what some of the issue was, these students that want to retake, retake these, these assessments, haven't been in, in class, and the teacher ends up doing a lot of teaching the student, and they end up doing more work than the students. And I had always been told by Elaine Holt, some of you might remember her, was an assistant superintendent here, and when I started teaching, she said, if you're doing more work than the students, you're doing something wrong, so.
But that, as you talked about that, that may be the place to address it, if they have a certain number of unexcused absences, and they don't do well, they don't get a chance to take it, take the test over. You want to wade into this, Dr. Mosley, or would you like to stay out of the line of fire?
I think, I think this is a very healthy discussion. However, in terms of the right place to do this, I think we're just talking more about policy and not necessarily about competency and the components of it, seat time versus non-seat time. So, I'm, I'm all for this, but in terms of running and getting kind of, getting to the point of the agenda, I would respectfully ask board members to just focus on the policy, please, and then we can come back to this at a later date.
Mrs. Oden's the one that stared us off course there.
Thank you.
No, I think, I think it's good. I think it is something that should, should be part of the conversation as we continue to refine those things. So, anyway, the motion before us is to approve policy JH student attendance as reviewed with no changes. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Back to you, Ms. Van Twyver.
Okay, the next one is advertising, sponsorship, and recognition in schools. This was amended quite strongly, not strongly, but lots of it. And this gives the superintendent of schools more leeway with arranging for special recognition of donations.
So, the motion is to approve policy KHB?
Yeah, it is.
As amended, it's our second, seconded by Mrs. Ziem. Discussion, Ms. Kaufman?
Thank you. I may see a typo, sorry, I know we, how much time we spent on it. The very last paragraph on page two, actually, the title of the last paragraph, should there not be right to rescind as compared rights to rescind?
Where are you?
The heading of the last paragraph on page two.
Yeah, we only list one, right.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just assume that'll be taken care of, and so we don't have to go through all the amendments and all that stuff, if that's okay with you? Okay. So, the motion is to approve policy KHB, advertising, sponsorship, and recognition in schools as amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Our next meeting will not be until December 6th? No, that's under HR. That's all right. I believe it's December 6th. We will not have a meeting in the month of November due to holiday time. We were scheduled our third week in November, it's right before the holidays, so it got moved to December 6th, it's a Wednesday night, and that's it.
Okay. Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, Dr. Murataki?
Yes, excuse me, thank you very much. The last meeting of the Curriculum and Evaluation Meeting Committee, rather, was held on the 16th of October. It was pretty interesting, and we actually did run over our agenda. We kicked off, the first item was out of order, but Mrs. Kleiner from the mayor's office actually came and talked to us a little bit about something called the Mayor's Challenge. Now, I had hoped that, there was a information that would be presented on the Mayor's Challenge. I thought it would be included with tonight's board minutes, but it didn't look like that it made it, so, anyway, we, the main items of the agenda for that meeting were a discussion of full-day kindergarten. We've been having full-day kindergarten now for over a month, and administration had previously asked that a discussion, giving us a status on full-day kindergarten be moved until this month, which would then give the district about a running month or so worth of running the program. And so, we actually did have a very interesting discussion on full-day kindergarten. For example, I thought, you know, I thought I knew a lot about education and kindergarten, but that was the first time I heard of data clusters, or cluster cards, rather, so. But, in any case, we, we had some interesting discussions which related to tools for formative assessment, structured versus unstructured play, examples of socialization that children learn in kindergarten. We also discussed a, you know, things like gaps between the kindergarten curriculum... We also discussed a, you know, things like gaps between the kindergarten curriculum, between say the earlier plans that we had and what it looked like things were actually working out to be. All in all, I think it was a good summary of what we had learned across all of the buildings that have full-day kindergarten. You might think that because half of our school buildings basically had full-day kindergarten, primarily from Title I, you, you would think that we had a great template for all of our buildings. But I'm not sure that was true because a big component of buildings that had full-day kindergarten in our district is that they're Title I schools and have a larger number of children that come from economically challenged families. So it's not necessarily true that you should be able to just cookie cutter Title I full-day kindergarten and spread it across all of the schools. That doesn't tend to work very well, in my opinion, and I think, you know, we are very, very conscious of that in this district. We're very sensitive to that. I was very pleased at the result. And I think that the committee members that were there at the meeting also had a good discussion. So the, the part that we just barely got into, which was going to be very interesting, is a presentation on, on data. And this is basically data on assessment, including things like how did we do on a smarter balance assessment? We had like a couple, three years' worth of data going back on the SBA. I say we just barely got into it because there's a lot of data. And we only spent about, I'd say, less than half an hour talking over that topic. And so as a consequence, at the next meeting of the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee, which I believe we moved from the 21st to the 28th of October, I think, we just punted it back one week, I think. It, it will be fully noticed, but I believe that it is the next meeting. A continuing discussion of data will be the first agenda item on that meeting on the 28th. Now, when I say there's a lot of information, if you go to the, the school board website and you go back to October 16th and you click on that link, what you'll find is not only an announcement of the times and agenda and where it's gonna be, but there's also gonna be a link that has a document called Agenda and Attachments for the Curriculum and Evaluation Meeting of October 16th, 2017. If you, if you download that attachment, starting from page eight and then going on for quite a few pages, are, are many pages of, of interesting data that reflect on how our district has been doing in terms of its assessments for the last few years. You know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, it's all there. And so I'd encourage if you're interested in actual, you know, data on how did the school and our students do last few years based on a number of different types of assessments, grade by grade, area by area, that's a good place to start. Page eight, October 16th, 2017, Curriculum and Evaluation Agenda and Attachments. I encourage you all to, to download that, that document and look for yourself. Okay, so, and I think I mentioned that the next meeting will likely be on the 28th of October, if I'm not.
No, never heard of it.
Is that the wrong date?
November?
It's November.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's.
Next meeting's on November 28th at 5:30.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so I'm done. I must have questions.
Okay. Um, that brings us to Human Resources. Mrs. Zeeem.
Uh, Human Resources would like to.
Mike.
Your mic. There you go.
Is it working? Must, I sound loud. Human Resources would like to make a motion to approve Policy GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal Records Check as amended.
Seconded by Mrs. Oden. Is there, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, thank you. I think I found another typo. On page three, in the, where it says, "When the superintendent receives a notification," the next sentence, well, further down in that sentence, which it says, "From the state police on a particular person," which they, and then it says fines. I believe that S should be pulled. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
So we don't need to make an amendment for that? Okay.
I don't think so, unless you want to. I think we can take care of that without.
The easiest way for me is the best way.
I like it. Okay, so the motion is to approve Policy GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal Records Check as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes.
Our next meeting's on November 15th, if I read the schedule correctly. Thank you.
Okay. Liaison reports, we have Ed Council. I expected Mrs. Hohensy probably.
I went.
You were there? Well then, you have the floor.
Oh, you wanted to report on it?
No, no, go ahead. No, we're good. No. I was just gonna add, Mr. Kaufman, that we.
Go ahead.
No, no.
Why don't you do a kind of a team thing?
Yeah, we'll sit next to each other and we'll start again.
We'd known ahead, we could've done a little PowerPoint.
Whatever you, your summary, summary, and then if there's anything else, then I'll jump in.
Well, I wanted to keep it brief. I did sit in on the Ed Council meeting last week, substituting for Mrs. Hohensy, who was in Germany. It's a baby girl, in case anybody was curious.
Congratulations.
What's the name?
Oh, gosh, Signe Marie.
Okay. Congratulations.
I hope I said that correctly. I don't know if I had to have a French accent or not. I think Signe is a, is that, I, I don't know, I think it's a French name. I don't know for sure. But anyway, mom is doing fine and I think Doris comes back tomorrow.
Oh.
If I recall correctly, returning at the, literally the end of the month. So in the past, I've heard different things about the Ed Council, that it was a great thing and then it was sometimes not the most well-spent time. My personal observation was that I felt it was, uh, it was a meeting that really fulfilled its state, stated purpose, which was to share information between the teachers and the administration. I thought it was a productive meeting. The teachers that did participate were prepared. They had an agenda, they had a list of things they wanted to discuss. I believe we got through probably everything that they had. There are a few things that I would like to comment on. There was some discussion about recovery and that it caps the grade accomplishment. They observed that there was an inconsistent implementation of competency grading in terms of grade improvement and that some teachers still can't verbalize what an A+ is to the students. So it's sitting out there, but it's still undefined. And the number of recovery attempts were not limited, but honored students can only have one attempt per competency per term. And I found that all very confusing and I think worthy of future discussion 'cause my recollection was recovery was available to everyone and because of the demands that have been placed on the teachers, it has been pulled back. But I don't know if the board ever approved those changes. I think they've been made. So I, I think that we, again, here's another instance of competency grading and the process of recovery that I think deserves some more discussion. Then had some interesting observations about the workload of the administrators, in particularly the assistant principals. I, I didn't realize just how much they did. So they highlighted to me, which I thought was very interesting, that each assistant principal in the high schools, and we're only talking about the high school in this instance, they do the reviews, the observations, teacher evaluations for about 50 teachers. And in addition to that, they also are responsible for working with about 350 students. So that, the way the academies are, are split up. I'm curious, there was some mention about past, I, whatever that review is that is coming to the high school.
Niasg.
Niasg review, and they, they wanted to ensure that previous concerns have been addressed before we get into the next round of it. And they had asked, interestingly, we, the, the attendance policy that we discussed tonight was brought up by them asking for it to be updated and I explained that we just reviewed it with no changes. So, and I, I can see based on our discussion tonight, there's still interest to, to keep pursuing that. Dr. Mosley?
I would just add, and thank you, Mr. Kaufman, I would just add that they were pointing out, we started to meet, we have two categories of, of point of views from the meeting. It was the positive and concerns. And so one of the positives that they pointed out is that the South Greenhouse was recently completed and they really found it to be very, very helpful and very positive and they were appreciative of that. They also were very appreciative of the leadership here with Mr. Burns. They felt that despite having, being down, being down meaning that there was, because Mr. Burns had transferred, transitioned to the principalship here, that they were missing an assistant principal for a short period of time. And they really felt that all the administrative team really stepped up and really helped out and they just wanted to make that, to make that point and make me aware of that. And I thank Mr. Burns for his leadership and, and his team for that as well. They also talked about, you know, and I really appreciate their self-reflection, the, the teachers in the district, and they acknowledge that our growing population of our ELL students and they're looking for some training around that to really providing some better instruction and, and servicing that population. And that also came up during our discussion. We also talked about some challenges, certainly attendance, that we talked about, the Niasg report coming up, making sure that there was enough support and time and consideration for this report that's coming up for both of the high schools. They also talked a little bit about what Mr. Kaufman alluded to around the assistant principals workload. And I don't have all of the information and nor do I have the model here, but as a result of some budget cuts in the past, their responsibility is that the freshman academy actually isn't functioning like the freshman academy. It's not functioning what it is, its intentions were because of their workload. And so they really wanted us to consider that and to be reflective on that. So we also talked about substitute teachers in the district. We are aware that we're struggling right now with substitutes coming in to the district and being available to us. And we have put some provisions in place to make sure that we are, we had a sub, a substitute fair recently facilitated by the Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Ogara, Ms. Ogara, excuse me, and the assistant superintendents were there. So we are trying to attract and retain as many substitute teachers we can in the district for our kids. And that also came up during my, during muffins with Mosley where parents were very concerned that there weren't enough subs in the district. And so now we're, we've taken provisions and steps to make sure that there are subs available for our kids when we have teachers' absence. So I agree with Mr. Kaufman in his assessment. I think it's anytime we have an opportunity to talk about some concerns, but also talk about some positives, I think it's, it was a, a very good conversation. So I appreciate the union, I appreciate Mr. Kaufman and everyone having a very frank and open dialogue. For our next meeting, we're going to identify two concerns and then really focus and brainstorm on those concerns the best we can as a team.
Because it's come up in two different areas this evening. Last year, they had what they called the competency implementation teams. They're doing, are they still in existence? Do they, are they still working on these various issues that come up with competencies? Or has that group been disbanded or?
I don't have any answer to your question, Mr. Ferrentin, but I can find that out. I didn't.
Mrs. Oden?
I'm not sure, but I think that might be part of the contract issue where committees were not meeting outside their responsibilities and that hasn't been resolved yet. So that could be affecting that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Good point. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to ask about, we did this, a sub fair two or three years ago and at that time it was quite effective. Got a lot of response. The economy's changed quite a bit since then. How was the response this time?
It's interesting. That's a very good question. So I'll answer it the best I can. So when we have an inch, when the substitute or person expresses an interest to become a substitute, we received quite a bit of interest. I say interest because then we contact the person, we check their references, and then as we start to go through the process, that interest starts to whittle down. And then we get to the point where we call people to be substitutes, I mean, to come in to sub. And so the availability of people can, can sometimes fluctuate. And typically, people who are substitutes are looking to get into teaching, they're looking to, to explore or they're looking to, if, if a better opportunity comes about, then they're, they're also going to, what I say, explore those opportunities. So we have an interest, we've had some people, we do have some subs that want to work in the district, but because we're not as competitive as our, our local communities in terms of pay and, you know, to be honest, it's, it's a challenge at times to find people to work Mondays and Fridays, which are our days that are, are, has high absenteeism. So when you factor all those in, we, we had, we have more subs now than when we started the school year. But that doesn't mean that we're going to be able to retain them because if a substitute teacher can get a better job working as a para, they'll, they'll, you know, ask to be taken off of ASOP and then they'll move to become a full-time para somewhere else. So they're usually looking to get into teaching and certainly a profession, and they're usually, our subs are looking to make a little bit more than what we're currently offering.
There was a time in the district where we, we needed a lot of subs because teachers were being pulled out of classrooms to do committee work and curriculum. Have we, we have a good sense of where we are on that now? Is that pretty much all gone away? I mean, are we, are the vast majority of the substitutes coming in now required to cover, somebody calling in sick or something like that?
Yes. So one of the things that substitutes can do is that they have a preference. So typically, most, if not the majority of our subs prefer the elementary school. And then they prefer the middle school and then, you know, the high school. Nothing against the high school. I'm sorry, I was a high school principal. That's just the way it works. So, and we have a lot more elementary schools than we do high schools. So a, a sub would prefer, most of the sub candidates we get would like, were, are more attractive to second and third graders as opposed to walking in and teaching an AP physics course and being a sub there. So in a sense, they have a little bit more comfort and a little bit more power and control over middle school kids in terms of, I'm sorry, elementary students over content than they would probably in algebra class. And nothing against our subs, please, I'll just use myself for example. I, I was a pretty good chemistry person, maybe back in the day, but if I had to substitute teach a chemistry class right now, I would willing to bet the students know a little bit more than me in a chemistry class. So there's always a comfort in content when you're substitute teaching. So the, the goal of the sub fair was to just try to get as many subs into the district as we can. It's always a work in progress. There's, there's never a magic bullet. We just wanna try to keep the students in the class, make sure that they're getting what they need and also honor the, the teacher contract when, when teachers are out.
Okay, let me just say that I would be in that group that would rather work with second or third graders than the high school kids. Nothing against, I think high school kids are great, but they know so much more than I do. It wouldn't be fair. The last question I had, we have a new system, well, it's been in place for a couple of years now. I can't think of the name of it.
ASOP.
Has that been useful in providing data to help analyze what's going on and, and tracking it?
Absolutely. So we've found Fridays and Mondays are very difficult to, I mean, that's the days we typically see a lot of high absenteeism for a variety of reasons. And that's a, those two days are very challenging to get subs for, and, you know, as you mentioned earlier, the economy's doing well. The salaries, the salary we're offering for the subs is, we need to revisit that. I'd like to revisit that during our budget season just to try to have the conversation, not like I'm trying to break the bank, but certainly have the conversation so that we are a little bit more competitive than our, our surrounding districts. So a variety of factors and the answer to your question is the ASOP has been very helpful.
So, you see, now you brought something else up, so I got another question. So, you see, now you brought something else up, so I got another question. How much would we have to raise our rate to be competitive? And I ask this because if I recall correctly, each dollar we raise, it adds somewhere around $20,000 to $25,000 to the budget.
Yes. I don't, I don't have that, I don't know what the surrounding districts are currently offering. I just know that they're a little bit more competitive than, I shouldn't say a little bit more, more attractive than us.
Yeah, I understand.
And unfortunately, well, we have, I mean, we're the largest school district in this vicinity, so we could use a sub every day.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Okay, great. And Mr. Donovan's here. Welcome, Mr. Donovan. Did you have a good time down there with our friends at Board of Alderman?
The Budget Committee approved the para contracts, so it goes to the full Board of Alderman next.
Very persuasive. Good job. Mr. Kaufman, did you have something?
Hundred percent.
I can give you a data point on Memromac if you're interested.
Okay.
So, they give their subs, for the first 20 days they work, $65 a day, which I believe is the same as us.
First, not consecutive, just first 20 days in the district?
First 20 days. And if you work beyond those 20 days, the rate goes up to 75. And the rate is different if you're a certified teacher. That's another ballpark completely.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And one of the nice things is, for subs, is once you meet that 20 days, you don't have to requalify every year. You've done that one year, it carries to the next.
Okay. And let the record show Mr. Hallwell's here. Welcome, Mr. Hallwell. I understand it went well.
Yep.
Good.
It was unanimous? Are we saying it was unanimous, Mr. Hallwell?
Just at the Budget Committee, yep.
Yes. But that's good. Thank you.
Yep. So, for your benefit, we're just at unfinished business. And the first item there is board governance, committee team building. Dr. Mosley?
So, in your packet, what I enclosed is some, and I say a draft, a draft of some information on EAB in terms of what board governance would feel and look like within the district. So, that's one of the first documents that you have in your packet. The second document has to do with the New Hampshire School Board Association and the services and the information that they could offer the board. I would ask that the board review the information, but I also would like the board to consider perhaps having a representative from BAE and the, sorry, EAB, I mean, EAB, EAB, excuse me, come down and listen to a presentation. You could ask them some questions, you can just get a feel of what you're looking for, and they could, you know, I would say, start that dialogue from both the EAB and the New Hampshire School Board Association. So, I think that would be something I'd ask the board to consider. I'd be more than happy to set it up. I was thinking maybe 10 to 15 minutes of the representatives from each organization come down, talk with you, you could ask them questions, and we could be potentially done within an hour. So, I just, I put that out there. I'm not asking for you to make a decision right now or anything like that, but I think it might be helpful in terms of continuing the dialogue around school board governance.
And you would be proposing that that would be a special meeting, not trying to tie it into one of our regular meetings?
I would defer whatever makes it easier for the board. The only thing that I would ask is that we have someone traveling from outside of the state, and I shouldn't say that, we just have people traveling.
Sure.
So, I would like to give them ample time to prepare. And also, I, you might have some questions, or you might have specific questions of what you're looking for too. So, if you wanted to make it in like two to three weeks, you have a week to generate some questions, we can send them down to the different organizations, and then you can see how they respond to those questions. And that could be either in public or whatever you, I'll defer to the board on that.
Yeah, I just, a little concern, it's, we can sit here and talk about, and I agree that, you know, we're going to do 10 minutes on this, but this board has a tendency to sometimes get into conversations that would cause that meeting to run longer. And I would, and I would hate to jam up one of these meetings, for example, or something like that, but we can talk about that. Mrs. Zine?
I had told Dr. Mosley that I had spoken with Mrs. Bagley, who is the public health nurse, and she said that there were, that there were people in our community who were given grants to do just this kind of thing. And so, I would hope that maybe we would extend an invitation. In fact, I last spoke to her last week, and I said to her, I think you need to call Dr. Mosley. He's the boss, I'm just an errand girl, and share with him, because she was, she was sharing quite a bit with me. And so, I'm just thinking that maybe at the same time, we might have their representative come and speak with us as well. The good thing about them was they were free. Hopefully, that means, yes, yes.
Well, and I've spoken to someone in the community who has connections like that, and asked them to look into that, and I haven't heard back. It's only been about a week since I spoke to them. But, so, what timeframe, you think, in the first of December? That give us time to go through this whole process?
Would you, I can schedule, and Mr. Kaufman actually gave me, I included in the packet just, that one right there.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Kaufman, Public Consulting Group extends digital learning solutions. This is just from this website. I printed this out only because Mr. Kaufman had given me this reference from Boston.
Yep.
And I emailed them, and I didn't hear back from them. So, I just, we're, any leads that I get, I follow up, and I ask people to give me some information, but they didn't get back to me. So, I'd be certainly willing, Mrs. Zine, to follow up on that. And if it's going to be one of those things, and I agree with the Chair, Mr. Farrington, that we probably might want to just have this one thing on the agenda, and then, you know, give each person 30 minutes, I'm just throwing it out there, 30 minutes for presentation, half hour for a quote, question and answers, or whatever we'd like to do.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Farrington. I'm just kind of curious, so, we're not the only board and/or commission in the city. Has one of the other boards or commissions actually had a group come in and talk about board leadership? Or are we the first one up? It might be interesting to find out. So, maybe we could ask our colleagues in one of the other chambers to let us know. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you.
Thank you. I also floated another idea to Dr. Mosley as, as a possible resource to conduct a workshop, a planning workshop, or whatever it turns out it might be, and that was Dr. Murataki. I really, no, because we know you, we trust you, we know, I personally believe you have the skills. I still want to see some of that MIT Sloan School stuff benefit the district a little bit more. So, I just want to float that out. I know there's time commitment attached to that, and you're leaving the board, but at the same time, I think we're keeping it tight, and that trust is very important. I know that was a concern that Ms. Hoence had about outside groups kind of steering us the way they think we should work as compared to a bottom-up process where we would define that for ourselves, which I personally think is the best and most effective way to go. I'll just throw that out there, maybe you can think about it.
Anyone else on, you going to respond?
Yeah, just very quickly. Sometimes in situations like this, an outsider is actually better than an insider, just to put that out there. But if asked, I will certainly have to pray over this, but. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Zine?
And I was just going to add that Mrs. Bagley did say that this group, I guess they did one on diversity for Mr. Conrad. I didn't, and I didn't remember it, but she specifically remembered that they had done on diversity. And she said that they have different topics, that sometimes they do a series of mini topics. And so, it was kind of interesting. She seemed to know quite a bit about it. And so, it will be interesting to hear more about all of them.
All I'm proposing right now is just a listening and questioning session. I'm not asking board members to make any commitment. I, again, I could look up Mrs. Bagley and get back to her, and I'll reach out to her after this meeting. And what I think is helpful is just kind of what I would, what's been helpful for me anyways, and maybe helpful for the board, is at least you know a little bit what you're getting. So, I've asked people, just provide a little flavor of what you offer and what we can anticipate. So, that's, so there's no surprises, so we're all on the same page. And there's a little bit more than just, you know, the, and again, I'm not pushing it, I'm just saying that, that the Nashua Board of Education is not part of any entity or any membership that governs school boards. And you're a little unique because you're attached to, you know, public education, you know? And there are so many nuances and committees, curriculum committees, you're, you know, you're dealing with teachers' unions, you're dealing with policies. And so, that's for about 11,000 students in the district. So, you know, you're a unique entity in a place like New Hampshire, which the only person, the only, I would say, I would say, community that is reflective of your demographics that come close is probably Manchester. And I'm stretching here with Concord. So, you're dealing with a lot of different unions, a lot of procedures, finance. I mean, your budget is not the same as any other surrounding districts as well. So, there's a lot on our plate. So, it's just, I would, for the next part of this, I would just like to say that you're just a little unique than other, other boards in the, in the city.
And I'm not trying to put it off when I say first of December, just knowing what the November schedule looks like, it's just, it's really hard to fit anything in there, and that gives us a little time to do something. Ms. Van Twyver?
Dr. Mosley, I recommended Kim Marshall to you. Were you able to look into him?
I haven't been able to reach out to him, but I think that's a.
Get to do that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. And Dr. Mosley, I'd just like to point out, Manchester, our closest demographic, is not a member of the New Hampshire School Board Association. And when we discussed it here at the board, when we chose not to go ahead and we voted, I believe, at least twice on this, was, one of the reasons, and one of the, what decided my point of view on it was when I asked the members if they attended any of their meetings, and no one had done that. That was my recollection, Ms. Van Twyver.
Okay. We're not going to debate the School Board Association, so let's just.
Thank you.
Let's move on. Okay. So, moving right along, we've got the DOE 25 report. You want to introduce?
Sure. What I thought would be helpful, there were some general questions about this report. I thought no more than 15 minutes, Mr. Donovan can provide a brief, brief overview of it, and then we could move on. That's fair enough, Mr. Donovan?
Clock is running, Mr. Donovan.
Certainly, and I, no way we'll take 15 minutes. Unless you really want to get into detail, I can go for three hours, but I don't think we want to do that. Okay. Little background first. This report, if you remember, a few, a couple of weeks ago, you signed some reports, which were the MS-22 and MS-24 reports. These are a series of reports that are required by the state, okay? Basically, if it's an MS report, it's a report that goes to the Department of Revenue, okay? Basically, what they do with this information is they give you your tax rate, okay? So, they, they come out and say, here's the set of reports we want to see, and they take that information, and they put it into their system, and then they come back and they give us our tax rate, okay? The DOE 25 is the one report which really goes to the Department of Education, thus DOE, but it is required by the Department of Revenue as part of the whole rate-setting process, okay? Now, these reports, the first couple that you signed a couple of weeks ago, it's just the budget cut into different ways. It's the same information that this board approves, plus throw the benefits on and the special revenue funds, but it's all the same information. There should be nothing in there that's foreign to anybody. These reports here, what these are, are the financial results for the last school year. So, for the fiscal year ending June of 2017, these are the financial results. These reports are typically due to the state by September 1st. But since we're associated with the city, and the city has never completed their audit, then we're given more time to do it. Though, there's always a hurry at the last minute to get them done so that we can get our tax rate, which we want to get the, the city needs to get the bills out, et cetera. It's the way that this city functions. So, we get the information. Now, keep in mind, this is audited information. So, it's just, it's the audit information that's in this, it's in the CAFR, which is the, you know, the state audit report, which you can view and read at your pleasure. And basically, it take, we take that information, and we just put it into the format that the state wants. So, quickly, just running through the first few pages of this DOE 25 is the balance sheet. Now, this board really doesn't even look at the balance sheet. We don't deal with the balance sheet and any of our financial things because we're all tied in with the city on the balance sheet. Then we have, the next few pages is about the revenues. The revenues that we get from the state, the revenues we get from the federal government. Many of the revenues we get from the federal government are in the form of grants, but they're defined as revenues in this state report. Then there's a page about the capital reserve and the trust funds that are associated with the school. Those are pretty much managed by the city, but their school trust funds are a school capital reserve. The money is actually held at the, at the city level. Then on the middle of it, pages probably seven through 15, those are basically the expenditures broken out by elementary, by level. Elementary, middle school, high school, and district-wide, which would be anything that doesn't fit neatly into one of those three levels. And it breaks out the salaries and the benefits and all the various types of costs associated with each type of line item. Then, after that, there's some, there's a page on, detail on food service. Not sure why they care so much about food service, but they asked for the information. Then there's some more details on the, there's a balance sheet and information on the trust funds, so there's the balance sheet side of those funds. Then on page 20, there's a, the amortization or debt schedule. And this is just the debt associated with school projects. It's not the full city debt. You can see that in the CAFR. Then there's a couple of pages where it's basically taking our special education expenses, and it's breaking those out by level and by type. And then there's a one page, which is basically, they want some special detail on equipment and summer school costs. Once again, I'm not sure why they choose those, what they do with it, but they asked for it, so we include it. Then in the back of this report, it's on page 25, it's really the one number that we find that's used on a regular basis throughout the state. It's, it is the cost per student, cost per pupil, okay? And it breaks it out by level, and it breaks it out by, in total. So, for example, our cost per pupil for the 2016-17 school year is $12,333.72. That's a number you'll see in various presentations. What's the cost to educate a child in Nashua? That's the cost. So, it takes all the costs, divide by the number of students. That's all that really is. And you can compare that, if you go on the state DRA site, I think the Department of Ed also has it, you can compare that to what other towns are. Very small towns have, typically have a higher number because they don't have that many students. Larger towns have, the numbers vary from probably around, you know, 10,5 up to about 16,000 or 17,000. And then, the last page in the report is another page that is used somewhat, it's the school district profile. It's actually titled Page One. It's right at, towards the end of the, I think it's the last page that has any numbers on it in your package, second last page. And that basically takes, here's all your costs, and it also gives a percent. So, for example, of our total. of our total costs, 36.6% is regular education costs. 19.9% is our special education costs. And it breaks down all the various levels and it gives you a percent. That's interesting. Sometime I compare that when I review this. I, I review this before it's sent, line by line, to the previous year, comparing to see if there's any significant variances. I'll then ask questions. Typically, it's five or six things. We'll look into it. Occasionally, I'll find something that was miscoded or whatever. But I do take a look at this school district profile, compare it to the previous year, and see if there's any big increase. Either way, there were not many increases at all this year. It was pretty steady. It was, you know, there was more money spent this year than there was the previous year, but percentage-wise, it's still pretty close. So that's, that's what that is. The MS 25 is simply a little smaller version of the same data that's in the DOE 25. It's the same information. So those are the state reports. They do request, you know, signatures of a majority of the board members. And some of the reports, for example, ask for the actual board chairperson or board president, whatever the case may be. Sometimes they ask for the superintendent. These two reports actually ask for both of those. That's a summary of the reports. Any questions?
Ms. Van Twyver?
Mr. Donovan, can you go on the state website and, and see this report, the Department of Education?
I don't think they put this full report on the, on the website. I've never looked for this full report, no. There's data from this report that they take and, and organize in different fashions, like the, the profile, I think, is done. And they take the cost per student and they create a statewide report.
Are there any type of instructions and, on how to fill this form out on the state?
Yes, yes.
So there's someplace that you can go on the, the Department of Education's website that will tell you a lot about this report?
Yes, we, we received directions from the state on how to put this, what goes where on this report. So we get it. Is it on their website? I've never looked because we get it sent directly to us, but I would assume it would be. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Kaufman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I have a couple of questions. On page six, where it goes to total revenue and other financing sources, it speaks to the general fund of 151,505. Is that the total? Is, are the amounts next to it in addition to that 151? Do they get that entire bottom line? Is that the, the sum total of the one, two, three, four, five things on that page? Does that constitute the complete number?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the 151 million, that's the total defined by the state in their format of the general budget.
Right.
Okay, the other things, for example, the food service, that was the food service budget. That's not in the general budget, but it is money spent. And then there's the special revenue funds, which are those are the funds that generate their own revenue. You use that revenue to incur costs. For example, a simple example, that's the driver's ed program. Students pay to take the driver's ed program, that goes into a fund, and then those costs to pay the instructors to run the fund. So quite frequently, some members of, of the, of the, of the city come forward and try to say, well, this includes a cost to run your district. Special revenue fund has nothing to do with the cost to run your district. It's costs incurred, but revenue that covers it. So it's not a taxable piece. It's not involved in the tax calculation. And then the capital projects, the next one down, those are the, you know, the bonded things done. And the trust agency, those are the special funds kept by the city in various trust accounts, related specifically to the school. And if you look at the, I think in the back of the budget book each year, it'll list the, the details on those trust funds. It's probably also in the CAFER, too.
Thank you. I, I know I have another question. I appreciate the way they break it down because this is something I was trying to figure out when I had asked Kathy to help isolate the costs for each of the schools and some of the programs. So, hang on a second. So, so the, okay. So on the special education page, which is 12, 21, when they speak to, does this number include psychologists and guidance, or is that considered part of the general staff and not, do they break out what's special ed-related as to what's, you know, general population of our students, or is that considered special ed?
Guidance is not. I believe the psych is.
Okay.
I don't think guidance is included in special education costs.
Okay. And I was curious, early on, you spoke, I wish I could find the exact reference. Oh, actually, I think it's after this, when you get to that profile. Wait a minute. I was surprised there was a, a page you, yeah, sorry, page 25, when you speak to current expenditures, and you pull out food service revenue, which makes sense to me. But I'm puzzled why transportation costs come out. Since we are required by law to pay that, why wouldn't that be considered an expense that, I mean, we, we have no wiggle room on that. It's something we have to deliver. So I was curious why their transportation expenditures are removed from the per pupil cost, when in fact, this is a cost driver of the district?
It's just the way that the state defines their cost per pupil. I wouldn't, I wouldn't deduct it, but this is how they do it.
Okay, so this is what's asked of us to, when we, when you provide this information?
Yes, this is their specific format, so.
Being our finance guy, and you live and breathe this thing, and probably know exactly what cell has what number in it right now, but I'm just curious, would, would you, as our chief financial officer, chief operating officer, would you include that if you were?
Certainly would, yes.
Oh, okay.
I would include transportation, yes.
Okay. Because that is a cost driver for us.
Yes.
It's kind of weird that we don't count it in what it costs us to deliver our service. And I had one more, two more things I want to share. Again, I found another typographical error on their profile page, the one of one. So in your notes, the very last of the four lines, the word, you have transpos, two letters got swapped also, as low.
What's that?
This breakout of expenditures will as low be reported. I think they wanted also.
Yeah, I'm sure that's what they meant, yes.
Yeah. And then finally, I was trying to understand and resolve the, the page that's after that, where it's this horizontal page, where the bottom number is 146,414,000. And I was trying to understand how that number related to the 151,505, which is previously stated as the number that is, was the complete summary of the general fund. So I was thinking that maybe, I was just looking at the difference to see if that difference was, but it's not. It's close, but it's not the same.
So you're talking about the page that is titled Schedule of Expenditures-
Yes, thank you.
-Computation of Indirect Costs?
Yes.
Okay. In an indirect cost, there are certain things left out in an indirect cost calculation. The indirect cost is the amount we're allowed to charge when we get grants that we get back as revenue. So when you do an indirect cost calculation, you're not allowed to put all your costs into it.
Oh, that's like holding back that 5% for administrative fees or?
Well, that's what the indirect cost is, yes.
Oh, okay.
But when you calculate an indirect cost, they don't allow certain, for example, in a, in a government entity, you're not allowed to put, let's say, advertising into your indirect cost rate.
Okay.
So there's specific line items that are not in here because they're not allowed as part of the indirect cost rate.
Okay. And I think one last thing, nope. There is another typo in here. I don't know where it is right now. But thank you very much. Oh, the word general is misspelled on that profile page.
Okay.
2,300. So, thank you very much. I, I wish this percentage page was toward the beginning of the report. I was looking for the percentages and I didn't want to have to calculate them, and I was happy to see this. Thank you very much for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Excellent presentation, Mr. Donovan. That's why I like having you keeping track of our money. Any other questions on the form? Okay, moving on to new business, BOE-approved parent contract. We've had our update on that, I guess. We good for that? Brent, I'm sorry?
I was just, are we going to talk about that? I-
Okay, we'll jump right in there, Mr. Hallwell?
Sure. So we had our, the Board of Edu, the Board of Alderman Budget Committee, Budget Review Committee. We went over the contract, talked about the details. I think we had, there were a couple of questions, but for the most part, I think they were very supportive and talked about how they, I think, on, on both sides, let's say that, that they were very supportive of the parent educator contract. So that's five votes at that contract. I think I also noticed that there were at least seven members of the Board of Alderman that had already sponsored the legislation, which usually means they'll vote for it. So-
Good.
I think we're well on our way to getting that passed on November 14th.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions? Looks good. Brentwood discussion.
So Dan, if you want to start with the Brentwood, and then we, I can kind of jump in?
Okay, we, Dr. Mosley and I had a discussion with Tim Cummings again, who was the city, I think, Economic Development, I believe is his, is a role. If you recall, last year, we, we had a committee. There were two or three board members on it, myself and the superintendent and Sean Smith. And Mr. Cummings came to many of the meetings. We put out a, an RFP. We got back some proposals. We found that, so originally, I think our plan was to move forward with moving Brentwood into the existing facility that central office is in, and then finding a place for central office. The main reason being is it's hard to find school-type space. But there are also some other things going on at the time. The mayor had said, well, there may be, Burke Street may come available in three years, which now that's probably not available in three years. And Brentwood, we thought we had a slight chance to get it one more year. It turned out we did, and we ended up staying there. So things I think are a little different now. Brentwood is probably not going to be available next year. It's not cast in stone that it won't be, but they have sold, Suresk, which owns the Brentwood building, has sold their larger facility. So they're in, in better shape financially. But I'm, I, I think their, their goal is to not own any real estate and just be a consulting company. So we started the discussion of looking at, at spaces. Mr. Cummings is going to, I think we just spoke to him a couple of days ago, right? And so he's going to do another view of the city to see if anything else is available. We did talk, we brought Dr. Mosley up to speed with basically the three finalists that I believe the committee had. One of those buildings no longer available. The one on Franklin Street was sold, I believe, to Brady Sullivan, who has a building next door. The other two finalists are still available, one over by the airport and the other one downtown. So, and he's going to take a look, but I think we should probably, you know, we need to sort of get going if we're gonna, gonna do something. And I think-
Yeah, I think we need to, if I could just jump in, we need to start having these discussions now because it's going to, we, we just can't move a program in like one or two months. So it's a question of, you know, do we have the Brentwood program come back to our, our central office space, and then we move central office? Or do we find a space for the Brentwood program and keep central office where it's at? Or just exploring as many options as we can. But so part of bringing it up now is to continue that discussion. I know there was a committee that was part of it. Some members of that committee consisted of school board members as well. I'm happy to, to explore that. I know Chris Breen's wanted to be a part of it. Just keep in mind, I don't want a committee of 25 people either because it's just an exploration at this point. But we want to keep that discussion going and start the planning process. So we're not kind of running around in, in July, looking for a space for the Brentwood program. So that's why we thought it would be prudent to bring it up now, to have these discussions. I, I don't, no one that's sitting at the table, least I know, has a preference of any building within the, the district or downtown or at the airport. We're just, we wanted to, to bring this to the board and, and just to keep you informed, but also get some feedback as well. I mean, we're, we're certainly amendable to any viable suggestions that, that are out there. But, you know, the next time we meet, it's going to be, you know, in November. And then, you know, the holidays are on, on top of us, and then it's 2018. So we really have to start accelerating this process. Wouldn't say accelerating, but keep the process in our front view because it's definitely going to creep up on us. The other thing, too, and there are some financial obligations, too, that are going to have an impact on this as well. So as we start to build our budget, we start to make some considerations, we have to keep that in mind as well.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes, thanks. And I, I want to thank Mr. Donovan and Superintendent Mosley. I think it's a good idea to keep this on the front burner. And if I do remember correctly, that committee was never, that special committee was never disbanded. So I think it's still, is floating out there. It's not like we have to recreate it. I think we just have to reengage it.
Okay.
So one less procedural thing, anyway.
May want to revisit the makeup after next week?
Yeah, probably.
Mr. Hallwell, we'll give, Mr. Hallwell, come back to you.
So I think the other option that we might at least want to know what the cost is, right? If we take those students that are in Brentwood and were to place them in out-of-district placement, you know, where would, where would they go? What would that cost? I think it's always good to know. I mean, I think there's a cost savings.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But at some point, if a building becomes too expensive, then it's not a cost savings, right? So we should at least have that number. I see what you're saying.
Do I?
I'm going to get Ms. Van Twyver, then.
Sorry. Thank you. I wonder if it would be wise to look at a house for Brentwood. Clearway seems to do such a wonderful job with those children in a home-type environment. And I'd like to suggest that we look at some house that may be big enough with parking and space enough that could house the Brentwood team. Because I think that the home environment that they seem to have works well for Clearway, and it probably would work well for us, Brentwood.
Mrs. Zee?
As usual, Mr. Hallwell earns my respect. I think that's a great idea. I, what popped in my mind when you said it was, and I thought that, that at the time we started this committee, we knew that, that there wasn't anything available within range that we could reach. But, but we didn't, I don't think we actually did, we, we actually came up with a number. So, and being nebulous with numbers is not good, is it, Mr. Hallwell? So that's probably a great idea.
Mr. Hallwell?
Well, I think the estimate from the previous administration was the cost for these type students was probably on the order of $40,000 to $50,000 a year. So it doesn't take very many of those students to make it worthwhile to keep them in district. But I, but I think we should have that number to know what our overall-
No, because some of the, and may I, because going to your point, some of the properties that we looked at were very expensive. And if, which would make the payment very expensive. So it would be a good, would be a good offset to know when we were way over, to know when we were out of range.
Now, we've had so many different conversations around this, as different options have come to the forefront and then receded again. When we were talking about this a while back, we were talking about Burke Street, and the, there was going to be quite a bit of space available there, and we were, just very informally, we're talking about looking at the district and see if there are other functions that we would want to bring into the central office that currently aren't there because of limited space. Nothing comes to mind, psychologists, but we talked about that. We talked about IT, moving them into the central office, which would free up space at the high school for additional classroom CTE programs and things like that. Have you had that kind of a conversation, or we're not at that point yet, or?
It's, it's been very preliminary at this point. We're just, we will certainly explore as many options as we can to, whether it's our current existing space we have. I don't know the feasibility off the top of my head to have a program like Brentwood at a high school like this, only because those types of programs usually are, they do really well when they're separate, and, you know, these are high school kids, and despite all best intentions, they'll, they'll come together in some way. So we also, you know, it'd be nice to, to have some central office employees who are not located at central office now, but maybe come back to central office, so, you know, the intent is to provide the board as many options financially, and long-term benefits as well. So, one of the things that's really nice about the Brentwood program is that we're able to, what I say, grow our programs in a way that we don't have to send students out of district, and there are some financial benefits to doing that, and I don't, Chris, Chris Breenes isn't here, but Jill, she can certainly speak to some of our, our expensive out, out of district placements, that not only do we have to send them out, we send them out for placement, which can range from, I'm just making it kind of from fifty to eighty thousand dollars, depending on the needs, but also, you know, we're not even factor in transportation, not to get, we, because of our Brentwood program, we were able to, you know, make sure that we didn't send a couple of kids out of, out of district as a result of having that option. So, there are some benefits of growing our program, and particularly here in the National Public Schools. So, we'll keep as many options open. I, we're, I would just ask, if the board sees Brentwood on the agenda for the next couple of months, it's only because we're really gonna start moving forward and making sure that we start to take the, the proper steps for, for these kids.
Mrs. Zee.
So maybe as the next step forward, we, obviously, going to Mr. Farrington's point, with the election, some of us may not be here, so we probably, immediately after the election, want to start planning a meeting with Tim Cummings to, because the last time we had meetings, and, and he could share with us any new properties that may be available, and I think your suggestion, Ms. Van Twyper, was a good one, very good. I will, I will look in the residential portion of the Realtor MLS to see if there's anything of note.
Okay.
Mr. Hallwell.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the record was straight here. I'm a big proponent of what you just said, in terms of bringing, having capacity in the school to take special ed students, including setting up programs that allow us to take tuitioned-in students, right?
Yes, yes, that's a good point.
Because that's the best option for us, and we've been able to do that in some limited success. I think Ms. Breen is probably in the best position to say, are there other programs that you might combine together with Brentwood, like even if they're separated, but, you know, could you invest in a building that is larger than what you need for Brentwood if you knew there was this other benefit to having those? And it's always difficult with special ed, because once they go out, you have no way to pull them back, right? I mean, they, they basically have these services, and if they want to continue them, they can, so you can only sort of get, you can only build students for the program in the future, right? It's harder to bring, bring students back, but I'm certainly in favor of that.
Anyone else?
Can I just ask, I, I don't know who was part of the committee from last year, so I'd be more than happy to convene that, okay? Okay. Do, and I know the superintendent was involved, I'm not sure if Ms. Breenes was part of that committee. I, I'd like her or her designated to be part of that, I'm not sure. I think she just adds invaluable resources, resources and knowledge, and I think it would just be a disservice not to have her there. I think she knows most about this than, than I do.
But weren't there four members on the committee? Mr. Kaufman, you weren't, so...
Wasn't Ms. Van Twyper on this?
Ms. Van Twyper.
Yes, I was.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Oden, was it Mrs., was Mrs., so there was just the three of us?
Just the three, I think.
It would've been just the three.
Okay, thank you. So, so many committees last year.
But these are, these are both timely, whether it's governance, we need to, we want to move forward in that, and with this, if we were to find a place tomorrow, we still have to go through the whole funding process and down the Board of Alderman and public hearing and all of that, and all of that takes time, and so, we're correct, we need to move forward in this. Okay, so now we've got three items left on the new business. I, I assume they're all gonna require non-public, do you expect any motions to come out of any of that?
No.
No, okay. So why don't we, if there's no objection, why don't we move on to public comments, board member comments, and then we'll go into non-public session so that we can, folks don't have to sit around, and then we will come out and go home, if there's not gonna be any motions coming out. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up under new business.
Okay.
Thank you. Back in September, I had sent an email to the board, and at that time, just requested something be added to an agenda for the board, and that has not made it to a, to a board meeting yet, and my request had to do with a very simple, one-word, plus some punctuation change to the mission statement of the district. Essentially, what I wanted to do, and I included the text at the time, was add the word citizenship to "our mission." So I would ask that, that be added to a future board meeting, just wanted to bring that to the attention. And this other issue I can bring up at another time, so I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, I just, I don't want to get into a debate, but I think that, remember, we talked about this, and I think that when we start talking about the district's mission statement, I think that that, that is representative of a lot more people than just what is here on the board, and so I think we, that needs to be dealt with, whether we talk about it in governance, or in some other context rather than just at a board meeting. I mean, usually, when you talk about a school's mission statement, it'll come up in the NASDAQ... I'm sorry.
No, no, all right.
Forget, disregard everything I just said. Dr. Mosley.
No, Mr. Farrington is absolutely correct. I think we talked about it, you're, you're right. I, I think it's larger than a board. It, it has to do with mission in terms of the, the NIAS report. The, the schools have to have their, their own mission and their own charter tied into the mission statement of the district, and that needs to be agreed on by everyone, the board, the, the school council, I mean, it's a prodigious piece of legislation when you're changing the, or even a slight word to the mission of the schools, so it's a deeper discussion. I'm not saying what you're saying citizenship is wrong, I'm saying it, it requires a lot more input, so...
If I could, I, I think that, for the things that we have in, coming up in the future, I think a better place for that conversation to, to take place would be under strategic planning. I think that would, our plan would encompass our mission, and our mission would encompass our strategic plan, and I think that that's better than just as a motion here, but we can talk about it.
I just want to make the point that, if I remember the correct, the reason why it wasn't put on the agenda was not for the reasons that you both described, which I am sensitive to and would largely agree with, but it was due to time. So, that's my reference point, not what you've just described, and NIAS and all that other stuff.
All right.
I'll be, I'll be patient on that one.
Okay, thank you. And the other one, you said you were gonna hold?
That was it.
So, we'll go to public comments. Do we have anybody who would like to comment? Yes, the gentleman in the blue. Was this going to be a private conversation?
Oh, no, sorry. Adam Marcou, Forger Laurie Lane, president of the teachers' union. I was just telling Mr. Donovan, the Patriots just traded Jimmy Garoppolo. That's, that's what I said, a second-round pick next year to San Francisco, but I digress. I know, same reaction we had, shock of disbelief here. I'm very pleased that the Board of Alderman Budget Committee approved the para-contract. That goes to the full Board of Alderman, November fourteenth, and hopefully, we'll have smooth sailing. I did not realize at the time that seven members had signed on to endorse it, or whatever they call it, so I think we're, we're pretty good. My suggestion for Brentwood, have you considered putting an addition on the central office, or going up? The space, the land is already owned, the space is there, just a thought, and Led Street's right there for sharing facilities, so maybe they can use your office, Dan.
All right, any other public comments? Let's get board, board member comments on the record, and then we'll go into non-public session, start here. Mrs. Oden.
Thank you. I, I want to thank Mr. Burns, Nate Burns, the principal at Nashua North, Dr. Mosley and the police department. We had a serious threat on social media, and I think they handled it very well. I think they got news out to the community that it affected very swiftly. I appreciate that. I know I didn't receive any emails or concerns, phone calls from parents, they felt like they were in the know, so, and it happened on the weekend, and I know how hard we all worked during the week, and to lose a day with your family, I know Nate has three children, you have three children, that it, it affects the whole family, so I, I want to thank them. Thank the people, there was also the standoff, that I think we got an email where Nate stayed with the student, he had one of the students that couldn't go home, and Principal Burns stayed with that student to make sure that, that everything was gonna be all right, and was able to get him. I, I didn't get an update, but I know that I did get the email that he was staying with the student, so I won't, I'm sorry, what?
The student was picked up at 5:15.
Okay, so it was a, a long day for, for Mr. Burns, but I, I want to thank the people that, that put in the extra time, and I guess this is the thing about educators, that people don't always understand, it's not an eight-to-three job, no matter what the school hours are, you're always there to do the job that you have to do, and sometimes it's not in a job description, it's not in any plans, and sometimes your personal plans have to be on hold because of what happens in your professional life. So I want to, I want to recognize and thank those people, I certainly do appreciate what they did for our students. Thank you.
Mrs. Zee.
I just want to, I did fail to say something that I think is pretty important regarding the new community center on Arlington Street. I wanted to say that they are always gonna be looking for volunteers. The community center will only be as strong as the community makes it, if the community embraces it, and we don't have the funds to hire full-time people to be there all the time, so volunteers will be an invaluable asset, and so if you're, if you're a stay-at-home mom, or if you have a few hours here and there that you can volunteer, I would be very happy to see that you get to the right person, but I would also say that you can always contact Kim Kleiner in the mayor's office. She's, as Mrs. Oden pointed out, she's worked really, really hard on that project. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. First thing I'd like to do is correct a misstatement that I made at the most recent curriculum evaluation meeting. At the time, I, I said something to the effect that the previous administration did not advise the board about the need for paras in the new full-day kindergarten program. I think it was the next night or later that week, Mr. Farrington shared with me the memo that I'm guessing was from Mr. Boucher, which did in fact include that information, although we never funded it in the budget. So I just wanted to just correct that appropriately tonight. The other thing was, I also attended the, the forum that was held at the library last week for the school board candidates, and I will say this, I was quite impressed with the preparation of the candidates. They did come prepared, and I, in addition to the board members that are running for reelection, the people...
Excuse me, Hall, just to be a little careful. No, just be careful, please.
Please don't interrupt. So, what I wanted to say was that I was impressed with the preparation of the candidates, and I see these people as very much engaged and ready to serve on the board, and only that I was just gonna look forward to working with whomever the voters chose. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyper?
I don't have any comments.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes, thank you. We are just one week away from the next city election, and I'm the only member of the nine-member Board of Education, and knows I will not be back in January, so if I come back, I'll be sitting out there with you guys in the public. So, the first thing I'd like to say, and I'll make this brief, thank you very much to the, the voters in the city of Nashua for giving me the privilege of serving you for eight years. The second thing that I have to say is that when you are electing those four members of the board Tuesday a week from now, it's kind of the same thing that Pope Francis was told before he became pope, remember the poor. We live in a diverse city. We range all the way from incredibly wealthy people to the incredibly poor. We have people, this is a multicultural city, it's, it's very diverse. So when you are choosing those four, try to remember to pick those people who can represent this multicultural, multi-economic city. The third thing is that there's a, a great challenge, and I believe that the school district is going to be facing, in my particular favorite area, which is curriculum. Those of us that began to oppose the Common Core years ago, it looks like we turned out to be right. The proponents, the original proponents of Common Core included people like, you know, Mr. Arne Duncan, who was President of Obama's Secretary of Education, and by about three years ago, Mr. Duncan had kind of pulled back from his strong proponentsy of the Common Core. The, the presidents of the national teachers' unions did so about the same time, and just within the last year, even one of the biggest private proponents, Bill Gates, also basically admitted publicly that this hadn't worked. So, my question to you is, okay, so now what? The Common Core is pretty much built into just about every new textbook in math and English language arts that we have procured in this district for quite a few years. It is built in to the ACT, the SAT, and the ASVABs. So if we are now stuck with educational materials and standards that may have issues associated with them, what do we do? And that, I think, is the challenge for the board as it continues to move forward. I've got some ideas, but I won't be here amongst the nine, but I suggest that you make no sudden changes, and that you take full advantage of what the state legislature and the governor are allowing school districts to do, and that is to basically go ahead and look within your own school districts, within your own school buildings, and make sure you take full advantage of being able to identify what works and what doesn't work, and to use what works... and to use what works and to replace what doesn't. So again, you know, voters, you have a big responsibility, and I hope you, as many of you as possible who are eligible to vote, show up Tuesday a week from now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hall.
I guess I'll just say, I'm going to stay away from any politics, which is usually a thing that this board does, so the only thing I'll say is, in terms of the community center, I was not able to be there since I was working during the day on Friday. Actually, was it Saturday that they had it? So I think one of the things we should look at is how our schools are used. So our schools, well, especially at the high schools, are used, you know, quite a bit during the day. I think some of our elementary schools aren't, at night, rather. We may look at, are there programs that make sense where you combine, you know, education with community, right? We already do that in the sense that we have these pantries at some of the schools where, and then kids can get clothing at various other schools. So, you know, combining that together in a sensible way, right now it's done based on a school's particular needs that are driving it, but are there things we should be doing or investing in or thinking about how we run our schools and combining them together with those community services? They are, after all, in the communities that service those students. It's, you know, even if you only had a few staff members that were able to help at a particular time, that might be enough, a connection to a student to keep them going. So I don't think it's something that we've necessarily focused on because some of it's a little out of our hands, right? I mean, it would be, require money or grants to make that happen since it's not particularly focused on education during the day. But I think it's something that we should, we should look at as to whether that should be one of our goals in terms of interacting with the city. Thank you.
Cam, you got something you'd like to say? Oh, okay. All right then, so we'll come back to the non-public issues. We need a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A colon 32C.
So moved.
By Mr. Hallwell, seconded by Mrs. Oden. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Van Twyper votes yes. Mr. Hallwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, so like I said, I don't know how long this is going to take us, but when we come out, we're just going to seal the minutes and adjourn. Next meeting is Monday, November 13th.